So. Welcome back, Jordan. Jordan and Steve. Wendy, do you want to begin?
I guess I would say it's a special meeting of the development. We have Jordan and Steve here who have written a report on some of the feedback we've received since our November CDC meeting, if you recall the November CDC meeting, we had a package with all of the written feedback we've received to date and a chart prepared by Novitech that summarized it and had some recommendations for the committee. So for today's meeting, our goal would be to go through some of the feedback we've received since that November meeting and recommendations on that feedback from Novitech. And I think that would just help us get the next draft ready for the CDC meeting where we plan to have a new draft of the zoning bylaw. So in the package today, we've got a report from Novitech, we've got a chart similar to what we had in November, and a copy of all the written feedback we've received since the November meeting. We didn't include all of it since the beginning because you guys have already seen that formally reviewed it, it would make the package.
And we have a couple of recommendations that we need direction on. Two, two or three recommendations.
Yes, there are some recommendations in the package of the notes you could see. More so we on.
Yeah. Before we begin, I just in going through the document, I apologize, I should have sent this through email. Just one thing that caught my eye was was the second paragraph on page one. And it was just, just the notifications that it just says that it was advertised in three local newspapers. Brockford, Gordon Times, September Weekend, and the Prescott, but there's nothing further than the Prescott. So I understand what the reporter in times in September weekend was, but.
Prescott this week, so anything we advertise in the quarter in times. Marketing rep that rep there would also repeat it in press office.
Press office this, I just wanted to make sure that that was. So, okay. So. So the, the way that I read this and just going through, through the notes, the first thing that we need to deal with was the request for Center Street zone. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've had a discussion with it at the last meeting, Mr. Murray made a presentation, he sent in emails, people's emails, we've dealt dealt with it. The recommendation seems to say that it is recommended that committee consider whether the current MCR zone is preferred or whether the zone should reflect current uses. So. But I mean, in my mind, we've, I thought we gave direction on, on this last meeting, but I just want to open it up, I guess, to, to the committee to make sure that, that we're clear on what, what we want that area to. That's fair, right?
Sure.
So does anyone on committee want to comment on that proposed change to? It is MCR. And the proposal was to reduce it to, to R1 or 2, which is the current usage. Chris, do you want to weigh in first?
The, the, you know, if we were to say, yeah, that may be a good idea as the public had, they haven't had any consultation on this yet at all at this point, right?
Well, I mean. Yeah, I think this, this process has been going on for. I don't know, it's like two years, yeah. We feel like we started, yeah, we've been discussing this. And for that, I think there's been lots of opportunity for, for consultation.
Yeah, I'm sort of this specific, I, because this just came up to us last.
Yeah, so. I think the presentation was last, last weekend, but I think Mr. Murray had, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe in 2021, 2020, then you can send an email in regard to.
For the chair, yeah, Mr. Murray has provided written feedback throughout the process that this specific request was submitted just before the public meeting. So the committee or anyone present about meeting or who looked at the agenda online would have seen his request in the public meeting agenda. And he joined us on the May 2nd on a CDC meeting and made a delegation to the committee. I recall that each committee member shared some thoughts about his delegation. And it was mentioned that some more direction from staff in Novitech where we appreciated. Novitech's included some comments about his request in the report.
All right, so, so maybe we should hear from, from Stephen Burman on, on on what their recommendations actually are. So let's, let's go back with first. Think you're off mute.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was, if you're ready for me to speak or not.
Go for it.
So, so this is on the, the topic of the Center Street zoning. And the approach taken in the bylaw as drafted and as presented through the open house process and public meeting process and as it is in the version that we're proceeding with, as far as we know, is that the, the lands along Center Street are zoned MCR. And that's consistent with the zoning that's in the present or current bylaw. And we understand there was a request from a resident to to ask that those zones, that, that, those lands along Center Street extending out to the western edges of the village be rezoned to a residential zone. It's more in keeping with what the current land uses are. Our, our feeling on that is, is that the MCR zone does provide a lot more flexibility for sort of a multi type of use situation. And, and that is probably in some ways a good thing for, for main streets or sort of main corridors in villages and hamlets and towns and that sort of thing. However, if, if, if council felt that they wanted to recognize it as a residential strip as it is presently in terms of land use, we wouldn't object to that. There, there would be nothing wrong with that. It would just tighten it up so that it, it doesn't allow for sort of multiple types of other uses or, or sort of a multi-use type of zoning that we're proposing. So, I mean, I think there's that, and that's why the report was written that way is to ask for your consideration if you'd like it to be residential, or if you want to stay the course as we have been till this point with the, with the multi-zone type of approach.
Just one, just one question quick before we, we get started is that the present zoning of that, of that entire strip as it is now in our will be in our, in our current bylaws is MCR, correct?
It's MCR except where there's like a, an institutional use or a I think there's an industrial use there as well. They have said specifically for custom zoning.
Okay, good, all right, so comments.
So, to me, this is the biggest issue of this official, of this official process that we're going through as it pertains to this new zoning bylaw. And this issue arose because of what happened on David Street where an existing lot was zoned ends MCR, which gave the owner of that lot the right to use that lot for all of for one of the prescriptive uses that is included in the MCR zone, which included a quadplex. There was a, a great deal of angst at that time. And during that time of angst, council took a lot of heat, but it was totally in compliance with the zoning bylaw that was in effect at that time. And it was well known and well made known that if the community had a, an appetite to see that kind of things changed, that this process of coming to a new zoning bylaw was the process by which that should happen. Now, here we are at the lab, at the 11th hour after pretty near 14 or 18 months of, of a zoning bylaw amendment process. And Mr. Murray came to us on May the 2nd, and he made a quite a, an impressive presentation. That's one person. That is not the temperature that we heard from the community during the 14 or 18 months that this has been going on. And, you know, we're here to take the temperature of the community. And, you know, in view of all of the, of all of the upset that was raised back when the David Street issue came up, I thought we would have heard a lot during that 14 months, but we didn't. And I'm inclined to believe that, that are, are basically the instruction that we're hearing from the community is by and large, they understand that we're making a zoning bylaw not to reflect existing uses, but to reflect what the community might be. This is a 10, seven, five to seven year plan. So within the next five to seven years, we may see an appetite to have additional commercial uses brought into play along Center Street. We may, we may not. But from what I've heard during the last 14 months, I think we're well advised to leave it as MCR because that's the way it's been in the previous two official plans. As a matter of fact, I think when I did the research on David Street, went right back to 29, 29, what was it, 1990s, 1995 bylaw. So it's been consistent all the way along that that's the, that, that's the appetite of the community. And this, and I haven't seen anything in this present process that would tell me anything different, except for Mr. Murray, a single person. And I re, by the way, I, I totally respect his presentation and he's bang on, but doesn't reflect the community.
Mr. Martin?
Through the chair. So it's currently zone MCR. And I bring back to a situation we dealt with a year and a half ago where the residents opposed a proposed development. But our, our hands at CDC were, were tied because of the zoning. And we said at that time, should we not look at our zoning to reflect what is going on in the neighborhood? I think we can all understand that for the majority of that area right now, it is residential. People have had the opportunity, you know, for mixed use. But just because people haven't voiced it, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that they agree with this zoning. Because I, I think if we have a situation where somebody was going to suggest a large commercial operation that met the requirements of the MCR zoning, they would be here, just like they were at the rank and cardinal voicing the opposition. So I think it's, I think it's up, we need to look at it, did Mr. Murray's presentation didn't make sense? And is that what is reflective of Spencer Ball for that area that it's residential? There's a lot of other areas, you know, along the corridor where it is MCR and industry or, you know, the various allowed or prescribed commercial operations could exist. So I think it's, it's on us to look at that as an R1 or R2, whatever the, I think was an R1 suggestion to make it strictly residential to sort of, I don't like to use the word prevent, but yes, to prevent the, the disruption of the current sound.
Thanks, just for, for a point of clarity and either to Stafford or to the, to the planners. In the new proposed changes to this, to this area, my recollection would be that we the, what happened to David Street now along David Street could no longer happen. So that we changed the ability for that to happen on those side streets, right? The only place that would retain MCR would be along Center Street. But, but under today's world, if somebody proposed, if David Street wasn't built and they proposed it now, they wouldn't be able to build that same building on David Street. Am I correct in that thinking?
For the chair, I, I.
Yeah.
I think I'm following here. And we did do some split zoning where there were three lots that had frontage on Center Street and on, on another street like, like David Street. There were some lots like Sloan Street where there were through lots and you've left them some MCR on both sides. But we, I think we had made steps to prevent that situation from happening.
But then I, I just hear what Mr. Martin are saying, and I think what we did over the last 14 months was, was we recognized that Center Street is the main, sort of the main artery into town or, or at least the main street coming into town. And if there was going to be MCR development, we wanted it on, on those main streets, not on those back lots like David Street and recognize that, you know, we didn't really want that to happen, we couldn't prevent it then, but with the new bylaw coming forward, we do everything in our power to make sure that it didn't happen again, it was kind of a compromise viewpoint, so. Okay, that's fair, we can say, we've looked at it so far. Mr. Martin, are you good?
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I think we did, we did split the four lots, it still had vacant lot land on the button back on that, the turns. There. I did bring up at the time, and I still strongly believe that Sloan Street here should have been dealt with the same way with all these backend vacant lots of better MCR off Center Street back, should have split. Let them enough, put them with our one or our two up here on mainly on account of the traffic bias that come up here on Narrow Street towards the range, towards the town hall there and stuff. Four lots, five lots there, one in the township already owned, there are a lot of them, so needs to be required, these own MCR, so. But as far as the main street. There is residential area in here from here basically as far, as far as the street coming into the ring. But there's also places along there, buildings that are down now, the commercial buildings are there, that's, that's still a viable commercial lot that could be built on, I think it's yes, it's residential now, but we're developing, I think we gotta leave some area of that's in MCR. And this late date, it's hard to get more, more consulting from the actual landowners of, of the buildings that are there. There, what said before, you change, downgrade zoning, changing the value of the property. Not right now with the way houses are selling, but this housing that gets older, commercial property always brings a lot more money to residential.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Councilor LeBlanc?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like to see a lot. I, I can understand where Mr. Murray is coming from, but it is like, I'm saying, in person. I like to keep it at MCR because like what the person last week, nothing stopping someone buying two homes and moving and building a two-story apartment building for a affordable house for seniors. So what's wrong with that? And if we didn't have that in there, we wouldn't be able to do it. Or if doctors came in and wanted to build a clinic where Bill Burns is, uh, building supply was, we couldn't do it. That, so I like to say that part, and there's good parking if you, if you, you know, if it ever came and someone, some developer bought it and, and these houses and they moved them and built these affordable houses for seniors or clinics, it's real, it's there, not, I don't want to lose them. And I know those same if people say, well, you can come back, the developer can come back, but they'll say in those two, why discourage a developer who wants to go forward or for the house or for a doctor? So I, I like to leave the way this, Mr. Chair.
That's my. Pastor Cameron, do you want to weigh?
Um, I, I just. We, we've seen, we've seen what's happened in other villages in the, within the township when we lose commercial space. I, I I would, I would be in favor of the.
First, I don't know if you own my little library or. Nope, so, I mean, anyways, but I mean, I, I think, you know, there's a few things, right? It came very late in the game for us to have an honest, you know, discussion with, with in reference to public on it's, it hasn't been developed to, I think, was the mayor's point in, in, you know, this call of 20 years or more in, in a capacity alone there. And I think anything that would be going in there, you know, for allergic courses of people, like you worry about perspectives, would normally have to go through some sort of a site plan agreement anyways as well, so I, I think I'd say to the unit, it's sincere.
Comment? I'd like to see the left as is, I, I wouldn't want to have the municipal government changing people's zoning, have further consultation. And I believe the process of zoning bylaw is always up into amendments in the future, correct? So if there was something substantial that came forward and, and written down, I think with the weight of both, both sides of the issue behind it and well informed, I think that's something that could come up in the future, but for this point, I think we should leave it as it's, but now people are aware of it. And I think I'm going to weigh on this one because it's, it's, it's a big one. And, and I certainly supported retaining its, its MCR branding all the way out. I mean, right before Mr. Murray spoke, last meeting, we had the folks Marquis and Amy from The Odd Spot, and that would prevent outright, they'd have to go through a process to, to be able to create that, that new cafe in that area. And I, I look back to the FIS reports that, that we did with, with Pakenham and with Sealy's Bay and thinking back to those reports and, and going to their towns and seeing those towns and how the development is, is along those main arteries and how it helps, I think, to make Merrickville and, and things like that. And, and, you know, just because it has an MCR doesn't mean that it has to be a, a quadplex. It, it certainly can be small businesses like, like The Odd Spot. So it certainly hate to see that become more onerous and people go to other municipalities to create places like that, because I think those are the exact things that we want in our, our community. So if I count it correctly, it's not unanimous, but, but I only have one that, that seemed like, that they wanted to, to pursue the residential. Everyone else seemed to want to go the MCR. So Wendy, I think that's pretty clear that, that like, I think the recommendation would be that, that the area retain its current MCR zone. Is that?
Understood, yeah.
Fair? Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, yes, before we move on, yes. And having heard that discussion and arrived at the same conclusion that you just articulated, I, I want to draw Mr. Pence's and, and Jordan Jackson's attention to what I have in my package here, which is figure three. Now, this is on page four of the 89 of our package that we've got in front of us tonight, which is an excerpt of Schedule C of Draft 2 of the zoning bylaw. And I just have some question with the, with the mapping as I see it on this map in front of me. And I don't know whether you have some way of putting that up on your screen, and it's very difficult for me to explain this without a, without a visual aid. But I'm going to ask Wendy, if the coordinator, if she would just come to my desk, I want to give her the question and maybe she can better articulate it to Mr. Pence. But Mr. Pence, if you just listen as I talk to Wendy, maybe you can understand what I'm saying. So this is the current MZR zone that we're talking about, and we under, get the impression that it will remain. Now I'm here, and this is South Street, and we have a, a new build on a lot on South Street, and we have a lot here which is now empty where there was a fire. And I can't determine what the zoning is on those two lots that I've marked with an X. You can see them, I can't show them to Mr. Pence. But the yellow zone does not include the lot where the fire was, and I thought perhaps that it should, because I think that the owner of that property thinks he has MCR zoning.
I think that that lot is zoned MC, so we're looking at the corner of, so the southwest corner of South Street and Center Street. And so the lot that is on that southwest corner and the lot that's directly west of it, and it looks like both of those lots are zoned.
How can you say that they're MC?
Figure one.
Figure.
I think the yellow line that's highlighting the MCRs, so it just makes it hard to see that, that there is a dissolved line.
And this yellow line should be here. Mr. Pence, do you see what I'm looking at?
I'm having a difficult time following it, but.
Oh, sorry, maybe I don't have MCR. If maybe look at the actual schedule of the zoning.
Is that, this, these don't count because they were recommendations or they're, this is what's. You got a much larger copy.
Maybe I'll show it right to the camera.
My question is.
Yeah, I think she's going to try to show them. She's really pulling it up to the camera.
Indeed, it's Jordan here. Hi, I think I understand the question. I just think the highlighting overlaps one of the zone boundary markers. So if we look to the schedule without the markings, I believe the lots that the mayor was referencing are zoned MC, not MCR.
My eyes.
I, I.
Last time I looked at. Yeah, that shows it on, that shows it on. Figure two. Well. Upper. H3. Yes, but figure two has been changed.
I believe figure two is the old one and figure one is the new one.
I believe figure two is the old one and figure one is the new one. But figure one does show that the MC is that little island on the top, the, the northeast portion.
I can show you the schedule without the yellow lines of it. So this is from the draft. The lead spot, the other jobs on the bylaw. So this, see, it's pointing to MC, it's pointing to this whole section here. And those lots you're looking at are these ones right here. So that would include.
This one and this.
Yeah, and play for your red pen, that would include everything. This is all.
Yeah. Oh, see, there's the point. So the, this is.
Yes, that's the MC is pointing. So that everything in that red box is MC.
Well, if, if what I've just been told by the committee development coordinator is correct, then I'm satisfied.
Can we, so just so that, that we're correct, is there, is there a way that, that we can get that area of that to us before the June, the June meeting so that we are 100% comfortable with, with, with that?
Yeah. So at the June meeting, um, we will have an updated draft of the zoning bylaw. Where in this agenda, you're seeing the, the recommendations and the, the comments and feedback. And the draft is going to have all the schedules of the different areas and we would include central as well.
Right, and so with, with respect to that though, if it's just another copy of this and, and it still leaves, you know, the question of the mayor is not 100% sure. Um, I'd prefer that everybody was 100% sure. Is there a way that we can get blown up, that area blown up so that we, we all understand exactly what we're talking about? That's still a loss too, so.
So again, through the chair, yes, we, we, we will have that area magnified, but we, we can comfortably say that those, that area is MC.
Okay. Right, right, so we've given direction on that, we can move on to RSL or, or, yes. Any direction we need for that?
Um, yes, I have a direction I need for that item. Um, through the chair, I just want to say that it's about six thirty eight and we have a lot of members in the audience. And I think they're, um, here, here on, on one subject. If we're only going to do one more item, maybe that should be the, the item we should have on the Rock Street. A suggestion, but I, I think it's.
Yes.
As the chair.
I think I'm going to put that to the committee then, to the chair. Listening to the coordinator, she's indicating that, that I think Rock Street is number ninety-two, isn't it? And in the package, so if everybody wants to fire through to that, um, on the attachment A, ninety-two. Which is page, page eighty of the, well, I think it says eighty-nine. Um, but, but first I want, I want committee to be okay with us moving on to that item to recognize, you know, folks is just nodding their heads, okay? Everybody comfortable with that? So good suggestion, Wendy. And so, so I guess it's about twenty minutes then, because we're done at seven, correct, or six fifty-eight? So do you want to give us a little background then, Wendy?
Um, Ms. Bishop has provided, um, some, some feedback in, in writing a letter to the committee and council, um, requesting that the, um, the setback from the quarry, the, the land zone quarry to a vacant property that she owns. The three hundred meters, which is the setback that is in our current zoning bylaw. Um, but our draft zoning bylaw, um, proposes a setback of five hundred meters, which is consistent with the setback in our official plans. That's why it's, it's changing, because this is a, it's a vacant property right now. And the back of the year setback, uh, would be further than the, uh, the, the limits of the property. So wouldn't be able to meet that. So Nova Tech has provided some, some comments there on page eight and the phone letter is on page sixty-eight.
So before we begin again, just, just for a point of information or just a question for, for. But I didn't have notes in my official plan when we discussed official plan. When we changed this, but my idea was that this changed in our official plan to, to be the United Counties official plan. But I don't, like, I personally don't remember it ever being a big discussion or being a discussion at, at table. This is sort of the first that I remember really, really seeing that, that big change. So do we, do we know if, looking back was, I mean, I'm pretty sure.
Sure, I know that five hundred meters is a, a common setback for other municipalities. I would ask Steve and Jordan comment maybe specifically if that's, if they know that's consistent with United Counties officially. That's why I think that's what we did, right? I, I would ask Steve and Jordan if they're.
Steve, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, I can. So the influence area around aggregate deposits is, is either three hundred meters or five hundred meters, depending on whether it's a, a superficial sandy gravel deposit or it's a bedrock resource deposit, which would translate into a quarry operation. So those three hundred meters and five hundred meters are numbers that we get from the province. And so in the zoning bylaw, or sorry, in the official plan, we've, we've referred to those influence areas. And therefore in the zoning bylaw, we have to implement those policies. So where we have lands that are zoned on the basis of, of superficial deposits, we, we rely on a three hundred meter. And in the case of bedrock resource or quarries, we rely on five hundred meters. Now, I should say as a caveat to that, um, the United Counties is undertaking an aggregate master plan review and that'll, um, eventually turn into an official plan amendment that they're working through and has been on hold a little bit now because of some complications. So wh- when the, when the, when the United Counties completes that official plan amendment, it will require the lower tier townships to also bring their official plans into compliance with that county plan. That doesn't mean the three hundred meters and the five hundred meters will change. But what it does mean is some of the mapping will change. And with those mapping changes, there'll be some implications throughout the township. So it's too early for me to say what that mapping is going to look like. We've always anticipated that there will be updates to the township's official plan with respect to mapping when the county's master plan and related official plan amendment is complete. So I, I think that that's an important consideration. But the three hundred meters versus the five hundred meters, those are provincial standards that we're just simply implementing in this, in this document.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Mr. Pence. Quit, uh, ready to go, go for it.
Well, apropos this, this particular issue that we've got in front of us really shouldn't be affected by the county process because this particular quarry already exists, uh, as, as an operating quarry. And so the setback should be five hundred meters, should it not?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, if, if that's, if that's the number that we get from the, uh, if that's the number that we get from the province, um, and if that's what is presently in place, as I understand it, as I understand so far, that's what's in place, what, what rationale would we have to change it? Because you just said that those two numbers probably won't change.
Well, that, and that's my point is those numbers that, with respect to the comment that was made, I believe that they should stay as three hundred meters in relation to the superficial sand and gravel and five hundred meters in relation to quarry. So those numbers, the only, the only reason I was mentioning something about the county's plan is that some of the mapping will change. So that'll have a bearing throughout the county and throughout the township where those numbers get applied. But in the case of wherever a quarry is, it's always going to be five hundred meter influence area.
Okay, just, just so that I'm correct on this though, in our, in our present bylaw from twenty twelve, four point three seven, right? Uh, under pits and quarries, the township's current zoning bylaw, number twenty twelve dash thirty-five, requires a minimum separation distance between a sensitive land use, a dwelling of three hundred meters from the licensed limit of an excavation of a quarry. And then below that, section three point one five, um, the residential separation distances and other land uses of, of a draft, the draft zoning bylaw. So the new one requires a setback of five hundred. So our old bylaws, three hundred, and the new bylaws becoming five hundred.
Correct.
Chris?
I'm, I'm just, I'm reading this as in, I'm not actually even sure why we're, it doesn't look like we have a choice. If, if they finish the province that's saying it's got to be five hundred meters. Do we actually have some region here or is it, you have to adopt five hundred meters? But I, I, I interpret it as a session, so.
Through, through yourself then to, to the state or to the planners, do, do we have any say in, in whether it goes to five hundred or?
If, if you're, through you, Chair, if you're, if you're asking the question of the planner, um, I would say that it, that's five hundred meters in relation to a quarry. That's consistent with what's in the official plan and per county plan and provincial guidance on that topic. Now, having said that, anytime there's a standard in a bylaw, there is an opportunity for it to be varied by undertaking the appropriate studies. So someone could reduce that five hundred to something less than that if they were able to demonstrate what the OP calls for, which is usually a sort of an aggregate impact assessment. But five hundred meters is the number for quarries, three hundred for, for pits.
Right, so, okay. Is there anything, I mean, I, I understand that we changed it in our OP. Uh, when, when we did our OP and that OP changed so that it would become congruent with the United Counties? And it would reflect, you know, provincial policy. Uh, but I think the question from, from Mr. Ward, if I'm not, not mistaken, was are, are we bound? I mean, I know that we've changed that in our OP, but, but do we have to, uh, change it to the five hundred? That's, that was really your question, right? Are we bound by the province to make it five hundred?
Well, you're bound to, um, you, you're, you're required to conform to the official plan. And this is a general provision in the zoning bylaw that's applied across the township, not on a site specific basis. So that's why in, in this section of the bylaw, it's required to be five hundred meters to, to conform.
It's been changed in the official plan. So it has to, so, I'm sorry. You're, are you good? Before I move on? Yeah, okay, Councilor.
I just don't understand on this, this is the existing law. Created two thousand eight under the existing standards at the time as a building law. This is my property that I'm referring, referring to here. You'll feel interested in it, it really doesn't affect my value of my land one way or another. But I don't see that it has any conflict here, but. This was done under severance through the counties, which are standards at the time was allowed to be severed and, and imposed in the building lot. Instruction company was circulated, we filed no objection to the lot being created there. I don't know how we can township can say now you can't build in a lot, but met all the requirements at the time. Is there not a grandfather closet, grandfather seat lots in?
So the map.
If, if a house could build on it two thousand nine, the house could be there, the lot would still be there regardless of where the quarry was there when it was given. I don't see how, but the reason is why it can't still be a building lot.
Well, it, it is a building lot as far as I know, it was created by consent. But what the issue here is, is that the zoning bylaw doesn't allow a new dwelling within that influence area. So had they have acted at the time and built the home on the lot that was, they got approval for, that would have been the time to do it. But times have changed and I don't want to sound unsympathetic, but, um, we, we don't look at every individual property when we zone it. We, we establish general provisions that are meant to apply townshipwide. And, and that's what we have here is a, a standard that's meant to deal with separation distances between aggregates and dwellings.
It seems to be a case where, for certain circumstances, brand of, in every case.
Mr. Pence, is there, is there the possibility through, through a ZBL in, in specific areas such, such as this and specific circumstances, uh, such as this to do, um, you know, special exemption?
You could choose to give this property a special exemption for the setback. If you chose to do that, that, that's an option. Um, but to my point earlier is that that is treating this specific property with, with particular, um, attention. And, and then why would you not apply that same exemption to other properties as well? I, I, because it's a general amendment, it's meant to be townshipwide. And so, but you, but you do have the ability, if you chose as a council to adopt a bylaw with a special site specific exception for that property on the strength of what was approved before.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Pence. Did you, did you, how, hearing that, do you want to go any further?
Yes, uh, to my knowledge, this, this is the only existing lot, it's not built on within that five hundred meters around this quarry. So it's a one-off situation. We're not going to allow everyone's, we create it within five hundred meters of it. But just. There's only one layer.
Good. Are you first, Mr. Mayor, then back to Chris?
I just have one question, can, can these people, uh, apply for a bylaw amendment from, from the five hundred to, to, come to council?
Absolutely. They could apply for a zoning amendment or they could apply for variance. Now, now they're, they do have to meet the intent, official plan intent, purpose. There's the tests that they would have to address through an application and through a zoning bylaw amendment, they have to provide the rationale for it. But those are the two options they would have to vary that five hundred meter in respect to their property.
So it can be done?
It could be done.
Yes, yes. So, so, Mr. Chairman, I see, I see the issue that the, that the planner is bringing to our attention. When we're dealing with a zoning bylaw as we are here, we, we do not turn our attention to specific lots. We deal with it as a township wide thing. The mechanism to deal with specific lots will, will present itself after the zoning bylaw is in place. And this particular lot that can request a zoning bylaw amendment, I see his point. You know, and throughout this process, we've, we've come to realize that there are many, many places where our zoning bylaw does not really get down to each specific lot and we've had to deal with it on a broader nature. I mean, even the earlier discussion about Center Street, we were dealing with an area rather than specifics.
Yeah. Chair, 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 uh, I think Council Hunter though, you made it pretty clear that in two thousand eight, they did all of the groundwork to get themselves through the amendments that they needed to do to get it to where it would be a building lot and now we're taking that, that ability away again.
One of the counties. Counties is a percent lot and not us.
Yeah.
He counseled at the time of the approval. Seven counties granted it, wasn't like it was a non machine thing.
Right.
But what quarries.
Said it was okay.
Not operating so fast and work three five, so it was there long before. But I see where the plan is going and I agree with this setbacks have changed and we should be, we have to follow, we have no choice. That's provincial brought down through, I source is brought down, down, down through, but I think there is a South Pacific, I think, I think we should be able to make a valid argument. One lot, having been met all standards of day, should be allowed to build. Having met all the standards of day should be allowed to build it, build. It's not like it's gonna be the closest house to the quarry. At least three other houses that are still running the closure before that what community would be better, so.
Strong case.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, just chairman. Strong case for a zoning bylaw amendment.
So. So, uh, I'm just a little, I'm, I'm trying to figure out consensus of whether it's five hundred or keeping it at three hundred for that specific, specific law, so are you saying change?
Well, I think, as the plan said, regardless of the official plan of five hundred for, and three hundred, then if it passed, then, then unfortunately through the reminded the barrier as you say.
Ultimately, ultimately, the counties has already changed this in their official plan, they are
They're at five hundred.
They're at five hundred, so even if we, even if it came with a building plan, it still would have to go to counties for approval? No.
Through the chair, no, the lot is already in existence, they would need to apply for a building permit, which doesn't, the official plan doesn't really get open for building permits, there's no planning act application.
So.
They would need to comply with the zoning bylaw if that's at the time.
So if we were to change this then to five hundred, they could come to us for a minor variance or a variance. But would it, would it then have to go back to counties again for county's ultimate approval or could we approve at our level?
A minor variance and some environment, the counties would be like a commenting agency, but it would be a permanent variance committee of adjustment decision and for a zoning bylaw amendment would be, um, justice decision.
So it doesn't give the power of this decision to the counties to say no when they've already said yes in two thousand eight, I just struggle with that.
I think it turned out the counties were allowing the lot to be created.
I just want that to stay, that probably stay within this, I don't want to have to go back to them, yeah, approval of their. Um, okay, so Chris, I did see your hand, I gotta cut it pretty soon though, because we have to get lighter. Question here.
I, I think we just resolved, maybe all that anyways, but on the other side of the speech, if there was an actual valid and approved building permit before this went into place. Does that not lock it down for the period of?
Sorry, can you?
So if, if in fact, uh, building and permit was applied for and approved before ours only by law amendment goes into place, does that lock it down for the duration of the building permit or that some, you know, close of time?
Yeah, so, so my understanding is that the, um, whether or not the building permit is granted, it's dependent on the zoning bylaw in effect at the time that the application is due, of the building permit application is due. So if we need the building permit or application today and it was a complete application, it would be to conform to the zoning bylaw that is in effect today.
I mean, I think having three people speak or, or maybe, I think it's, sorry. I know he's giving us, he's giving us, he's giving me the warning, but I, I get, I get him behind it. But I, but I can't cut this without, right, without, there's no, I haven't got enough feedback. I still have three more members that I have to hear from to get any direction. Quick, quick.
Five hundred.
Five hundred?
Just, uh, ju- just one quick question to, uh, to, uh, the community development coordinator. Um, so what I'm hearing is if there was a, if there was a permit applied for today and in two or three days it was, whatever period of time was okay to go ahead, how good, how long is that for? What period of time is that permit good for?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the chair, I can't answer this question, my knowledge in that area is not not good enough. I would say the question for the building official, I could find out the answer. I don't think I'm gonna get your answers.
CEO of the church would be able to.
I would certainly do my best. So once, once, once the building permit is issued, I believe that it's either a three to six month timeframe period where there has to be uh, some type of activity in progress. And it, it is based on the, uh, the chief building official on, on, on progress being made and that, that, that permit could be.
Thank you, follow up to that. However, if something, uh, something came up, could an extension be applied for?
Still, for, for sure, the chair, as, as, as indicated, there is discussion with the chief building official for, for an extension.
Thank you.
The permit is issued.
And, and I'm gonna tie you down to five hundred.
Five hundred.
Connor, do you want to speak?
I have another question.
Um, five hundred to three.
Do you restate that as a full question, please?
Do you support it moving to five hundred or do you want it to stay at three hundred?
Just sort of like with context, so I can.
We've had, we've had a twenty minute long conversation.
I would like, I would like. I would like to see, uh, if a, a building was to be put up there as a home, I'd like to see a go forward as grandfathered in. Uh, three hundred versus five hundred, I think, uh, we would have to do what the county says. And, uh, to parent the coordinator, I don't know enough about this.
Okay, so we're making zoning bylaw and we have to make a decision whether we want it to be five hundred or whether we want it to be three hundred. So are you asking for a special exemption or trying to just nail this down?
It's not straightforward enough for me without more context in the question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would have been answered far before I came to talk.
All right, uh, no decision. So, so I'll leave Connor out and then, so I think, I think it's pretty clear then, I mean, the group is five hundred.
Playing some.
Yeah, okay, so, so direction would be to change it to five hundred. Wait, and so now we need to wrap up and move on. So the rest of the discussion we'll have to uh, there are several more comments that we're gonna have to deal with in June and are several more comments, especially from SNC that we're, we're gonna have to, to deal with in June as, as well. So my apologies that we couldn't get through it. And, and any quicker, but I, I mean, it's a process and I don't see any, I don't see rushing it being, being a good option for fourteen or eighteen months, like the mayor said, already deep in it. One more meeting is not, one more three hour kick out, it's not gonna, it's a bylaw that needs to be in effect for, like, like it was said, five to seven to ten years, so it's important to get it right. Uh, okay, so moving on quickly then, inquiries, notices, and motion, anyone? Thank you, none. Uh, question period leaving, uh, it open to question periods pertaining to, uh, the two items that we discussed on tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any, uh, questions? Man, you can stay.
I own that lot you were discussing. I lost a hundred and twenty-five thousand because of your refusing to give that person a building permit. I will tonight officially make an application under your current bylaw two oh one two three five with schedule, fee schedule B two oh two oh seven oh, that I want a building permit. My application out, they've worked follow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, anyone else?
I'm also affected by this property. Um, I understand that one of our lots is within the five hundred meter section, it may be only a portion of it. Um, we were granted our severances in twenty twelve and, uh, was under the impression that we would be able to build on those lots. And if you are going to request, uh, an, an ex- exemption to this property, who is the expense going to, to go to? A rezoning is not a cheap expense. Neither is a minor variance anymore. And, um, we were not counting on this being an expense or, or a zoning. Um, we're also considering or looking at possibly building, uh, an in-law residence on our existing property and this would also affect that. Because we would be within that five hundred meters and I'm wondering how will that affect that? I, I like the idea, but, uh, Connor suggested was grandfathering it in with the new existing, the new zoning bylaw. I understand that no new severances would be granted within those areas and that's, um, I, I haven't heard that anybody was planning on doing that. I'm not sure about the rest of the people. Anyway, I was wondering if we cannot have a landmark, then all this extra expense would not be put on our shoulders.
Excellent. Uh, does anyone else?
I don't understand what's changed. Why are these people being caught?
What have been taught?
Well, it sounds like at the time that their severances were granted, it was built.
Yes.
Now things have changed, or are they changing with this zoning bylaw?
Right, yes, that's exactly right. So the, the bylaw that's, that's, that's present, right, is, uh, I can't remember what the number is, it's on the homepage, but, but, but my point is, why would they not be in getting building permits under the existing bylaw?
Red passes.
Well, they still, they still.
Yeah, this is not pass.
I mean, they still could, but they only have a, you know, limited period of time. We're, we're taking away two hundred meters worth of rights for them, for them to build and uh, especially like the first, uh, person that said that they actually went through that, that process in two thousand and eight to, to get it. And now they would have to apply for that same process again, which is ridiculous, so. Okay, um, are there further questions from any, any, secret audience?
Uh, yes, Dave Chabaski. Uh, there's word in the community, uh, that, uh, Packerbury is or maybe it's in process being appointed, uh, amendment to their license. I'm not sure, perhaps John or someone could clarify on that. But the question is, and, uh, in consideration of zoning bylaw amendments is, uh, Packerbury obliged to follow OMB rule rulings of May the eleventh, ninety-nine. Uh, for license purposes under agreement with council bylaw ninety-three thirty-eight. So we're wanting to, there's some very specific rules in the, that came out of the OMB ruling. For the, uh, the quarry started operations, we want to understand if there are any changes that could be made, including the operation of an asphalt or a concrete plant on the site. These were very, very important exclusions in the initial ruling from OMB. So we need some clarification on that.
Thank, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chabaski, for that, for that question. I certainly don't have the answer, uh, to that, uh, question tonight. Um, but I would make the assumption that, uh, that her, heard the question and maybe we can get some clarity back for, uh, for Mr. Chabaski.
Thank you.
Chair, we can see clarification.
Any comment? Uh, there was gentleman at the back with the hat.
Yes, my name is Brian Pedler, present on Rock Street. Um, I have a couple of simple questions. First of all, I would like to know who came up with the idea of changing the zoning from three hundred meters to five hundred?
So I think.
It has to come from somewhere.
Just one second, and I think, uh, Mr. Pence, can you, can you speak to the, to the reason that it would change from three hundred to five hundred again?
Yeah, the decision was made when doing the township official plan. And we were simply implementing the direction from the county's official plan. And the counties would have been implementing the guidance from the province on influence areas around aggregate operations. So those, that's the genesis of those numbers.
Starts at the province, goes to the counties, comes back to us, and then all those official plans have to be approved, go on through.
I have another question.
Sure.
Would be most advantage to this change in zoning, I wonder? The understanding you said came from, from the provincial government in Toronto, but I am very curious as to who the advantage of this change would have?
So again, if I may to the, to the planner, um, the, the justification for changing from three, three hundred to five hundred? The logic behind it?
Well, I guess the logic from the province, um, is that quarry setbacks deserve a bigger influencer than, than sand and gravel operations because quarries typically deal with, um, blasting and vibration, whereas sand and gravel operations don't have those sort of far-reaching impacts, at least they don't extend it as far from the property. So the, the, the province, um, applies a five hundred meter influence area around quarries and three hundred around sand and gravel. Um, I'm not an aggregate resources expert to, to know how they came to those numbers. Um, as a planner, we, we are obligated to implement provincial policy and that's, I could answer that.
Mr. Chair, do you want to add something? The, the, the province generally imposes these kinds of standards because of pressure from the public. The public wants protection and so the, the province implements these standards on a province-wide basis to protect the general public. And then it's up to local municipality by means of amendments to determine whether or not amendments are appropriate. The way I read it.
I'd like to know how own, homeowners in that area are protected. If the quarry gets five hundred meters, we don't even get thirty meters from their lot line and they're blasting. I've already had three cracks in my foundation from the quarry, but they deny, they take all their own records. I've had my well go dry and they deny that too. So what protection do we have when they can blast within thirty meters of their zone?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to get into a discussion with the speaker, but that's exactly the kind of thing that the province hears and tries to prevent by imposing a standard in the, a standard that has to apply in the future. That's exactly your kind of, excuse me, Mr. Chair. It's, you know, it's that kind of a complaint that gets to the province and the province says, oh, we can't have this thing happening. We've got to make sure that development takes place farther or late.
Okay, well then they shouldn't be allowed to blast within five hundred meters of ours.
Yes, CEO, can we wrap it up? So it's almost fifteen minutes.
I'm there about news, uh, you're, you're, you're older.
Fifteen minutes into the.
We've, we've got another meeting.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
So wrap it up and, and we will continue the conversation then again for, what is the date for June, when, uh, development coordinator, sorry? June sixth.
That'll be the first Monday in June, that's for sure.
The first Monday in June, which is June, June the sixth, so, so not that the discussion is over, but it will continue again, uh, on June, June the sixth. Uh, for a normal CDC meeting, which, which can go from six thirty till, till ten o'clock. So we've got lots of time, we won't be under, under the gun to get it done and we can have a longer and full schedule.
So does that mean that none of the bylaws will pass before then?
Nothing will pass before that, no, absolutely not.
Excuse me, what's the meeting on the twenty-third about then? Cause we were told there was there, that you were going to adopt it on the twenty-third.
Uh, we will not, we will not be adopting the zoning by, we haven't seen the, the end document yet. Um, the document, uh, from the planners was supposed to be here tonight. Um, uh, we didn't, we didn't get it, uh, in our hands, so we hope to have it for that, that June meeting and, and it won't get approved. Maybe at the end of June if, if, but it still needs further public consultation.
Cause my house is literally, there, that quarry is in my backyard, literally. It's right on my property. So, and my house was built eighteen sixty, so.
So we, we welcome. So we we welcome you back for the June sixth discussion and we'll we'll continue with that. So there's no closed session. I need a mover for and a second or for adjournment, and then we can switch. So move by Greg, second by Chris. All in favor, of course, we're done.